Hello.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Thanks.
More in the public now, in the public world.
This is one that eats in waters?
Yeah.
Fire?
Whether you serve fire or not, we're going to be okay.
I'm good, I'm not.
Yeah. You don't have to. You don't have to.
Mike's there, Lena's there, Jen's there.
Lynn's there.
PB's there.
Steve's there.
Sarah will not leave.
You said Mike.
Mike, yep.
Lynn.
Doug's there.
Steve.
Joel's there, Steve.
Yep, she is there.
Yes.
Anne's here.
So Taylor and Joel.
Joel's here.
Joel's there.
We're in a car.
The only one I miss is Taylor.
It's Sarah.
And Sarah lives around me.
Chris. Chris, can you hear Robin? Go to the, go to Facebook.
Will you just hear the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
All set for penance?
Sam, yep. So Taylor is the only one.
Okay. And an entertain motion to accept the November 12th, 2020 school board meeting minutes?
Still moved.
By Elaine second, Mike?
Second, yep.
Ares emissions discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sarah? Oh, sorry. Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
PB?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
True?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. So moved. Entertain motion to accept the November 23rd, 2020 special school board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Mike, second?
Second.
Second by Patrick. Any errors, decisions, discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Lena?
Stain.
Doug?
Yes.
Stain? Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
PB?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Andrew?
Epstein.
Bob?
Yes.
Moved. Okay, on the communications, we have a winter sports participation discussion and I'm going to ask Mr. Keller if he would like to say anything with this point.
We're just here to ask for the ability to participate in winter sports. We have looked at all of the MPA guidelines. We feel that we can effectively and safely have a winter season with our new athletes and we would just appreciate the opportunity to be able to do so. I sent you a bit of information the other day that the Maine Interscholastic Athletic Administratives Association did a survey on fall sports. And although we would not have participated, it was nice to see the results come back for that. They were, of the schools that participated, 73% of those schools reported back with a total of over 10,000. Should be about 13,000 participants and with only 10 cases reported, so extremely low numbers. And as far as those 10 numbers are concerned, whether it was, you know, contract through sports or not is still up in the air. So a lot of community transmission still. We'd just like to have the opportunity to participate this winter.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Keller?
I have a statement. I can make a statement. In the fall, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't for us going forward with athletics. I felt for a couple of reasons. One, trying to get the school year started, a lot of unknowns. But most importantly, I didn't feel the MPA had stepped up to do what they needed to do to pass the straight face test. I couldn't understand how we were expected to have our kids do certain things all day long and then as soon as the school bell rang and we were doing athletics, it changed. The MPA has said stepped up. Looking at these, looking at the guidelines, I think that we can keep our students safe. There is a good chance based on what's going on around the state right now that the season's going to be, could be very short because it depends on whether or not counties are yellow. If you guys go forward with this, my, my point is that we would be considered under Franklin County, not Anderson County. Because we have three out of our four schools and the two schools that are involved in athletics are in Franklin County. And I also believe that the color designation for Anderson County is truly based on Lewiston, Auburn and not necessarily on Livermore and Livermore Falls. So if, I would like to see us go forward with athletics under the MPA rules that they've set for.
Anyone have a question on comments, Andrew?
I would like to support that as well because I'm tired of seeing the kids stay at home. I read through some of the rules. If they think they can run a ski meet under the rules they've got and they want to try to do it, more power to you to do it. But I don't think we should try to restrict you. I think the kids need, and the parents and the communities, need the chance to participate in the people again. I strongly support the record to try to do this.
Any other board members? Patrick?
Mr. Keller, could you just repeat the, the fall sports statistics that you have? Is that 13,000 students, coaches?
13,500 participants in, in, in fall sports. And keep in mind, up until like the last week, there were no masks that were required at that point in time. And of those, they had only 10 cases that were, had positive COVID cases throughout that.
Anne, then Doug?
Yes, my question, I'd like some clarification. If we approve sports, they only get played if we're green, is that correct? As far as the DOE designation, if we're yellow, can we, we can't practice anyway, correct?
Only if, only if our county, and that would be Franklin County, is green.
Okay, and right now Franklin County is green.
Correct, but that could change tomorrow.
Okay. So approving participation means that in order for people to participate, it has to be green?
Correct, and that's part of the MPA guidelines, talking about not being able to practice or play when it's yellow. Is that correct, Mr. Keller?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that to make sure I'm picking along the right, right lines. Thank you.
Yeah, Scott, has this information been shared to the public yet, you know, for their input? I know we tried to do that in the fall for the fall sports, get their input. Has it also been done for the winter sports?
Honest with you, with all the other things I've been doing, Doug, I'm sorry, I have not reached out to the public, but I think we have some people on the screen here, I don't know if you can see them, that might want to speak up and.
I would like to hear public comment at some point in time, Bob, if, if that's allowed.
Yeah, I'd like to get through with the, the board members and then I'd like to go to the public comment. Do we have another board member with a question? Are you, are you all set up?
I think so, for now.
Oh, and then Lynn?
Yeah, I just wondered if you could speak to any of the other co-curricular, extracurricular and other clubs? Are any of those also hap- happening this winter?
Absolutely, we have, at the high school, we have drama. They are currently rehearsing for a play that will take place in January. We have esports going on, we have several of our clubs and organizations like National Honor Society, the Civil Rights Team, they've all had meetings. Environment is practicing, so all of our other non-athletic, non-sports organizations are going on currently. And participating as they normally would, obviously following social distancing guidelines and the regulations that we have at school.
Thank you. Lynn and PB?
I need an explanation of how basketball can be played safely with foot distancing. Do we have a coach here, I think?
Do you want, the coach to answer that or?
Doesn't matter, I just thought, I'd just like to understand, in reading through the descriptions that we got from the MPA, I understood all of them but basketball, how that could be played safely.
Okay, so when we talk about social distancing, we talk about close contact. We know that it's, it's a maximum of 15 minutes throughout of close contact in order for someone to be considered a close contact. So obviously there are going to be times when people are within three feet. The, the steps precautions that they've taken in order for basketball to happen is everyone is required to wear a mask throughout the entire contest. All players, all officials, all coaches, all workers, our custodian, our trainer, and everyone in the room will, will have to have a mask on. There are some specific things that they've done to try to minimize the, or to maintain social distancing. One of those, and just very simple, so they've kind of gone all the way down to the beginnings, is, is the jump ball. Instead of a jump ball, which would bring the official in a close area with some of the players, they've decided to do a coin toss, so they don't have to do that anymore. So really, you know, when we talk about our students, we're talking about three feet, when we're talking about our athletes, we're talking about, or our adults, we're talking about six feet. So they're making sure that our, the adults that are in that, in that facility at the time are going to be at least six feet the majority of the time. Am I saying that there won't be some point in time where people are close? No, that's not going to happen. But they've taken steps to make sure that they can manage it and we think we can manage it safely.
Thank you.
PB?
So while we got the information, which I'm really happy about, I'm not sure that the community got what the MPA guidelines are. And I didn't know if someone could speak, just not read necessarily through the whole thing, but just give like a general outline, just so that the other people who are listening or potentially going to hear this meeting know what we are potentially going to vote on or against.
Sure. If, if we look at individual sports, obviously, I just briefly mentioned basketball. The other thing to, to really keep in mind is that there will be no spectators at any events throughout the entire season. With the mandate of 50 people inside, it makes it almost impossible to have spectators. You would need, when you think about basketball, if a team is coming to our facility, they're going to have about 25 people because they've got two teams, coaches. And so they're going to really take up about half of that. What we're looking at with basketball is having one of our teams, JV varsity, they, they come in, they participate in the game with their coaches. Because when you add our team in, you're up around the high 30s, almost 40, then you add me, our scorekeeper, our timekeeper, our officials, our custodian, our trainer, we're almost at 50 without having that second team in for Spruce Mountain. So we're going to have them not come in until the first game is over, or if they come in, we'll take them into the cafeteria or a classroom, so then they're separate, they can meet with their coach. And then when that first game is over, we'll flip-flop them to make sure that we're never over that 50. And there are, as I said, rules that they put in that are going to try to limit the amount of close contact that's, that's going to take place. If we look at cheerleading, cheerleading is the one that, it's a drastic change. There is no sideline cheerleading. With the 50 people, we wouldn't be able to have cheerleaders anyway, just because of numbers. But what they've done is, is they have changed that so that they will be performing, having it recorded. And the state championship and regional championship will be, or a conference championship will be a virtual competition. So they're going to record it, send it in, and the judges will get a copy of it and then vote on that. They changed it so that there's no, the stunting is changed. You can do pyramids, you have pods of individuals that would be doing any stunting. And there is no vocalization during their competition, so a lot of that stuff is changed to, to make it easier. If we look at skiing, Alpine and Nordic, limiting the numbers of people at each event because you can only have 100 at an outdoor event. Limiting or changing start times, obviously masks at all times. And so they're taking the steps to that. Those two sports tend to be a lot better because they're outside and when you're participating, there's a lot less close contact. When you're on this race course as this Alpine skier, there's nobody anywhere near you, so that one works really well. Nordic skiing, you might see somebody on the, on the course, but usually they're going by you or you're going by them and you're never really getting close contact for a very long period of time. Ice hockey is another one that they've taken steps to change benches and they did the same thing with basketball, I forgot to mention. All the chairs on the bench need to be six feet apart, so athletes are, are apart during, during the entire game when they're not on the court. Done the same thing with, with ice hockey, again, no spectators. And it's a continuation of change, you know, minor changes to the rules that are going to make it so that there is less, less close contact.
Any other?
Wrestling, wrestling is, is not supposed to take place until end of February anyway, at this point in time. It's kind of in the same category that football was, so it's, it's pushed, pushed way back.
Any other board members that haven't had a chance yet? Patrick?
Just that one quick thing maybe for Scott is in terms of staffing and transportation and buses, is that going to work out with how we're doing the two runs and everything? And, you know, assuming that all, all of these sports were to be going and?
Yeah, because it's going to be a limited season, that will help. They've already, I know we're talking with both Mr. Collins and Mr. Keller about having, whether they're going to send a JV team or, or B team, whatever. Because they've also talked to Mr. He's only allowed so many people on the bus, just like they have to bring the kids into school. They're working through those things. I mean, it could be a pretty short season, but it gives them an opportunity to at least perform.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
Yeah, Rob, we need a chance, we had a couple more questions.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Just clarification, Scott, so right now we're, we're totally remote learning. Are you saying we'd still be playing sports at this point in time if we allowed it?
Not, not if the building is in, if we're in totally remote, we would not be playing sports.
Okay, and I know in the past, you know, we've been advised never to vote on something we just hear for the first time the same night, so me for one, I'm not willing to vote on this subject. Are we asking, I guess, are you asking for a vote on all sports or are we going individual sports or how's that going to work?
It's up to however you guys want to make the motion.
You've had information from Mr. Keller for a while now, so.
Yeah, but the public hasn't, we haven't digested it, so we haven't talked to the public forum. You know, when we were advised by our legal counsel, they said not to, to vote until we heard it publicly first and then vote the next meeting. Just my two cents.
Any community members that have questions, comments? Sherri?
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. I just, I, I understand what Doug just said about not voting until public has heard the information. All of the MPA bulletins for all sports are always posted to the public and they have been on social media. And it's not the kids' fault, it's not Mr., it's none of our faults, but the MPA just came out with that information. I would hate to see our kids postponed because the MPA delayed distributing their information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Collins, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'd like, you know, I'd like to, you know, ask initially, middle school, they are, we offer really fast, really fast, all cheering. Follow the same guidelines as the high school, middle school, falls, MPA falls, just like they do, so we follow the same guidelines.
Any comments, questions from anyone?
Rob, having coached middle school across country this fall, I want to say it was a really excellent experience for those kids. They really, really enjoyed it. And the one thing about just kids in general in school, our students are doing an absolutely amazing job with every protocol we ask them. I, I just can't say enough for the things about our students and how they're responding to what we ask. And so I, one thing, I, I think this was a concern back in the fall, because we didn't know how kids were going to respond. And they have responded in an amazing fashion. So if there's any concern about, you know, kids aren't going to do what they need to do, kids are going to do anything they can do to play sports and be here at school. We've seen that all.
Like you say, what?
Red line.
You know, I'd like to hear what, what Mr. Taylor said, these kids, these kids want to play. And I think the one thing that we haven't really taken into account is, yes, we're concerned, we don't want our athletes or our student athletes to either contract COVID or to, to pass it on, obviously. But the one thing that goes unnoticed a lot, or isn't talked about a lot, is the mental state of what our teenagers are going through right now. They are, for the most part, we, you know, we pay a lot of attention to them in school, but they are really a forgotten population when it comes to this. There's not a whole lot of transmission within that age group and they're being, they're being forced to live a life that's completely abnormal for them. And one of those things that they can get back is athletics. And, you know, I would just, I would urge you to think about that piece because that's probably one of the most important pieces is, is the mental state of our, our student athletes, not only here at Spruce Mountain, but throughout the state. And I know they've probably seen the news lately and I just want you to think about, you know, kind of weighing the, the mental state versus the, the physical illness that may come, maybe. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that, so I appreciate it and thank you very much.
Patrick?
Well, it came to this point because I, I knew that we were going to touch on the topic of mental health, but if you all didn't read in the news recently, there was a sophomore football player in Brunswick who committed suicide last week. And it was simply because their sports kept shutting down, they kept having issues with getting to practice, doing games, this, that, you know, there's the mental health. You know, we don't know exactly the whole picture here, but, you know, that mental health piece does, I think, play a really huge, huge part in this. And despite the fact that we have some, you know, health and safety considerations regarding COVID and transmission, I personally also have some, you know, health and safety considerations in regards to the students that are able to do these things, their mental health, their ability to continue. So I'm, I'm in support of, you know, of, of winter sports program for the kids and, you know, hopefully that can help make a difference to let some of the kids see that they can do more, that they can be, you know, they have been, thank you for that, they have been showing us that they're doing a lot.
Anyone have comments, questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion regarding winter sports participation, if anyone wants to. So moved. Yeah, I need a, need a.
Yeah, we need to describe that one.
I didn't, I didn't want to say.
Yeah, yeah. I, I make a motion to have the district participate in winter sports under the Franklin County color code designation.
MPA guidelines?
With the MPA guidelines.
And is that, is that motion also include high school and middle school?
District, yeah, just like to cover.
Okay.
Yeah, point of, point of order. We don't need the Franklin County color designation that supersedes our reach as a board. That's, that's, that's state and CDC stuff, so we can just say under MPA guidelines and that'll cover us.
Make a motion to have the district participate in winter sports under the MPA guidelines.
Motion, we have a second, Andrew?
Second, oh, good.
And improve discussion, questions, comments?
Can I, point of order?
Okay.
Just real quick, most of the discussion we had should have been at this point, I'm not saying like it was bad, but just we should have put the motion on the floor and then had a discussion after Mark's presentation.
You're right. Roll call please.
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Steve?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Lynn?
No.
Joe?
No.
PB?
No.
Anne?
I'm not voting, I have an athlete in my close family.
Andrew?
I feel it's a conflict.
Doug? Five yes. Seven no, one extension.
The motion fails.
Can we, not that it matters, can we change Anne's vote to recuse? Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, any public comments? Okay. More comments, we'll start, Taylor, do you have anything for us this week?
Um, I think biggest thing is like with us moving fully remote, a lot of staff have been like really flexible and like coming from a student's perspective, that's been very hopeful. I know a lot of students, like, they were anxious about this coming, so like now that it's here, the staff being flexible has really helped students.
Staff being very flexible has helped our students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Any other board comments? Phoebe?
Hi, so we're very much aware that many people in our state, as well as our district, are still without power. That may have changed as of five minutes ago, but as far as I know, that's still the case. Now, as the weather is getting colder, I would like to get the word out that by dialing 211, you may be able to get assistance with heating and other important needs. Please keep in mind that 211 is not for emergencies. And you should, you need any assistance with any emergencies, of course, call 911. Now, that being said, the first thing, of course, we wanna make sure is that everyone is safe at all times. The other thing is, it's been brought to my attention that we have, our staff members are going above and beyond in every way that they can. What I'm asking for as, not only as a board member, but as a member of the community, as a parent, and just as a person, we need our students to be able to attend. With the weather being as it was, with people losing power and all these other things, even when we are going remote, I'm just asking that the community tries their very best to make sure that their students are able to attend classes. If you are able to have your student attend, we need them in class. Our teachers are putting their best effort forward. And the only way that we can be successful is if we work together as a team. We need our students to be in class and we need to be able to support each other that way. A teacher can't teach an empty room. Without the students there, it's just noise for them. So we need to make sure that when we're doing remote learning and once we're able to come back into the classroom, that we just need people to attend. So I know these are crazy times, but if we could have our parents, our guardians, anyone who is in support of these students, to try to make sure that they are there, that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Seeing none, superintendent support?
This will be kind of short because I got some things under the COVID-19 reports. Met with the Teamsters during the last few weeks, met with the Education Association as well. Spent a lot of time on FaceTime this past Sunday with our nurses, getting things set up for this week. I've met with the Policy Committee, met with area superintendents twice. I can continue to visit schools. We also had an important phone conference call with Crystal Flag, Ken Vining, and Siemens. We'll be starting some of the Phase Two projects very soon. And then some of those projects will be going into the spring and also into the summer.
Any questions or comments for Scott?
The Siemens ones that are working in like the entrances, the, the main part of this, the high school and primary school?
Elementary school and primary school for that. One of the things they're gonna start right away under the Phase Two, they're looking at starting the boiler project here because we have a second boiler. So the building can run on the one boiler. Normally, they don't do boiler work in the wintertime, but they're looking to possibly do that because they have people that can come and work right away.
And that would cause the least amount of destruction.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Let's move on to administrative reports. Eric?
Hi, how's everybody doing? This is kind of a quarterly report of what I've been doing since August to some point, and it's literally been two days since I played with what I did last year in St. Rose's. We've had five criminal events in the school that resulted in no charges, we've been able to handle them without charging anybody, and to be quite honest with you, now, we're with fifteen children, and other things, jail time. We had three out of control students that went to the result of the use of physical strength twice. This is down from last year, I think that's simply because we only had half the students there. And some of our more talented students are more remote learners this year. Speaking guidelines, helping their name for the block, doing some homework, taking college level classes, I've been at eleven times. Phone checks, we are, last year at the time, I've done nine regular hour at fifty-seven. Got no kids that are at home or not, some of the students were not, not logging in, not checking in. I did a couple more this week, I got a couple more scheduled for tomorrow. Assistant other agencies, four times, we've done six lockdown drills this year, which is a little more than last year, we actually, we're gonna have a new lockdown drill, but it's going pretty well. Three DHS referrals, mission issues, no updates, security complaints, we've got a few happen here, I thought, well, ten, we numbered our primary school, winter school, we have dog doors. Talking about some cameras and stuff, we're gonna do, and access like, to, 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 in the event of emergency, that one, you know, can get it easier. Better access to the school, I taught five classes, non-late classes, the school, I taught voice, I depend to the new staff, within our district, they have my wife's family, we could secure her record at Montwoodville. You don't say no to your wife. Parent assist examples, talking, locating students, talking with parents, trying to help kids, get, get back to school, meantime. Staff assist, everyone assisting with interviews, operating the agency, testing flight and equipment. I wasn't able to do much, we got back three laptops, a hot spot, we probably didn't think we were gonna get that, so that's good. Saw a hundred and fifty-three things, and this does not include daily security tech, kids stop and resume in my office, it's a public hallway. To give you an idea, last year I had a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty-four. So just a busy, just in a different place.
Any questions, comments?
Just a comment, Bob, he was kinda hard to hear, I don't know if you've got a better mic than you have next time?
They had a hard time here, they have to have people up to the tables, the rest of you, and then pop, just make it. And then that hand actually.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Tina.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick points to share with you tonight. As the Section 504 coordinator, I've checked the referrals that we've processed so far this year. We have processed to completion seven full referrals to date. And I understand that there are two or three that will be coming in, they're not in yet. But we'll be looking at those when they come in and processing those through as well. On average, our caseload is averaging around seventy students pretty consistently this year. Some move in, some go to homeschooling. And we've had some transfers in and then, of course, some referrals, but overall, it's sort of averaging out around seventy. Last week, I submitted my initial budget proposal to Crystal and Scott. So that has been in for those initial, at least the initial concepts around that. I did have to repost for an open position within our department. We had hired the position, but the person resigned after just one day, so that was sad and unfortunate. So we have reposted and we're moving along with that process again. But I want to just do a shout out for the Special Services Department. We had great collaboration with, and teamwork with a former ed tech who was in that position, and Tammy Verolt and the Special Services Department at the high school. And we quickly put a plan in place that will split coverage so that students that we, that need that coverage have that until a replacement is found. And it really minimizes the impact on students, so I'm super grateful for that team approach. I know everybody's sacrificing a bit to make that happen, but it's really the right thing for the students, so I'm, I'm very grateful. And then lastly, I participated in a webinar series with Drummond Woodsum with TME. TME did this also, and those occurred on November third, November ninth, and November seventeenth. And as always, the sessions with Drummond Woodsum are informative and thought provoking. The panel presented not only on the basic tenants of 504, but also on trending topics related to COVID and remote learning and all of that, so it was really great. So tropics, not only in the state, but across the nation, so it was really beneficial and I'm appreciative of that opportunity.
Any questions?
That's all I have for.
Any questions or comments for Tina? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Laura.
Hi, good evening. So I was fortunate to be able to attend a webinar that was, we tried to do it yesterday with Walter Beasley at a state level. And one of the biggest topics in that webinar, which took place today, was finances and what's going on around the state and on a federal level for food service. That was interesting and informative and we're tossing around a lot of ideas, but one of the good things that came out of that was the summer application for the summer feeding program. It will be opened, I believe they're trying for tomorrow to get that open so that we are able to apply and get the 2021 rates, beginning when we do our January claim, so that hopefully will be a little bit of a benefit for us. As we went into the remote learning, we did modify our meal distribution. And thanks to Jim and his crew at the organizing the buses and monitor for that bus to help us, as well as an aide that's going on the bus and helping with passing out those meals. We are at four different locations out through the community. We are at St. Rose's Church, we are at Brenton Store, Pike's Corner, as well as up to Meadow Brooks. And we are at each one of these locations between twenty minutes to a half an hour every, each day. And the bus then returns back to the, the school. Production's coming out of two of our kitchens, primarily the elementary, as well as the high school for those meals. And then we additionally are, have increased the length of time that parents are able to pick up meals for any remote learners. When we have been in the hybrid model, we were picking up meals between 7:30 and 8:30 for the remote learners. And we've extended those hours out until 10:30 now that we have all remote learning going on. So that's working and we was fortunate enough to be able to get organized and be able to start that on Wednesday. We immediately did open up our time slot and made it available Monday and Tuesday for anybody. And we really tried to work with anybody that needed meals and wanted to come pick them up. So that's gone on. In addition to that, our fresh fruit and veggie program that we participate in, of course, those items had already been ordered. And we did include those items along with the breakfast and lunch that was distributed. So all that product got out as well to the kids. In our department, we've continued to train with some of our new equipment that we did purchase from the fresh fruit and veggie. We spent a fair amount of time putting equipment together, carts, sealers, stuff like that, just, and then familiarizing each of the staff with some, using some of this new products to hope, hopefully increase our production. I continue to, you know, to participate in the list serve through the state level for food service directors on things that are going on, other things that they're experiencing, some ideas. We are continuing to have supply chain shortages and product, production issues with receiving our orders. So obviously, that's always a challenge. We never know what's coming in, what's not coming in. But we continue to work through that and modify as it's needed. And I think that's about all I have for you tonight.
Any questions, comments for Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Robin.
Hi, good evening. This week, I did some analyzing of our data from last year compared to where we're at this year. We are up thirty-eight percent for high school completion students. And I think that offering remote options is really helping with our engagement, so that's certainly a positive for our program. Unfortunately, our workforce training classes, a lot of them are not running, so we've seen a sharp decrease in numbers there. We're gonna be offering our online babysitter course again on January eighth and ninth, and that's for teenagers. It's a two-day class. And part of that will include a certification for first aid, CPR and first aid. So that will be on our website shortly. Last time I presented, I announced that we would be putting out a catalog around this time. We've decided to not put that out. It's just, it's touch and go, whether we're in session or not. So I'd rather save that money and find an alternative way to promote our classes. And lastly, I'm sure you know, Pixel put out an announcement yesterday about not rebuilding the digester. I had a great meeting today with the Maine Development Foundation. We're really looking at how we can support the community. Shyla was on that call, as well as Charlie Woodworth, who's the head of our economic development in Franklin County. So we're just looking at all the options and how we can help out, and we'll certainly have a seat at that table. And that's it.
Any questions or comments for Robin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, good evening. I just have a few things, I'll just kinda give you an update, a rundown on the situation of the buses that we have right now. We're in good shape. All the new buses are in, they're in service, on the road, and going good. Every year, we have to report these buses to the state, to NEO. So out of the twenty-seven buses that we are reporting at this time, our average age of buses is eight years old now. State puts out a life expectancy of the buses, so buses and vans. Expectancy is like a van is, is, is good for about seven years or a hundred thousand miles. A type C bus, the commercial style, ten years, a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And a type D bus, the transit style, those are fourteen years, two hundred and forty-five thousand miles. Very few make it to the two hundred and forty-five thousand miles, of course, being in Maine, they rust out before we can get to that point. Over, over the next few years, age is still gonna go down a little bit. Next year, I have to report three more new buses. And then I have to report three more again in the twenty-two, twenty-three reporting period. So at this point right now, in the bus fleet is in excellent shape. In the past two years and then counting next year, when we get the other three buses, we'll have received ten new buses, two vans, a new box van for the kitchen totaling one million, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one, forty dollars, all through grants and KSAC money. So I think the district's done pretty well on doing that. It's helped us a lot, and I think it's gonna save us money in the long run. The last thing I had is later on, you guys are gonna be voting on the bid awards for some older vehicles that we put out for bid. And you'll see that I put down that if I could get that money put into the equipment account, I can buy three camera systems to put in our vans that we have on the road right now, so we can cover ourselves for anything that may happen in a van or anything like that. So if you could just keep that in mind, that's all I got.
Any questions or comments for Jim? Thank you, Jim. Ken? If you have any questions, you'll be over here so that they can hear you.
All right, good evening. Well, I guess to start off, I think it's a little bit for Jim and myself, a lot, a couple months ago, I lost a boy with, with a boy in a failed position. We certainly had some tragic, tragic loss of one of our great boys here back a few weeks ago. We also lost a great boy who moved back to his hometown. With that, we also have, right now, we have two people out on disability, and also injured. And then on Monday, we had six people out because of a contact. And then on Monday, we had six people out because of a contact with COVID, or they do have. And that actually brought down 10 people. I want to say that I can't thank the other boys and not stepping up there, filling in as much as they could to try to make things clean indeed. Certainly find that the buses running, and I know that's a tough, tough task. So I do say, who is all the boys, you know, putting the extra time in there. COVID for my time, I can say, I can say it's called a curse or I call it a blessing. We have an institute that I believe incurred a lot of wonderful equipment, wonderful supplies throughout this time. And certainly would give it all to have the COVID go away. But it, but it had real strength and I believe this, this, for the next several years. I won't go on, so I'll just actually keep it kind of short. And, but we got so many, and we did a little maintenance practice yesterday, it was good on line. We've gotten, I can't tell you how much, and I will, I will give a list eventually when we have the time, so I'll give you a full, a full of it all. But we've got puddle scrubbers, we've got bucketers, we've got vacuums. And we've got, we've got so much kitchen meat supply, that's got buildings, we got some steak, green. We've got so much hand sanitizer, we just got six pallets of disinfectant wipes. Keep going on, we got several masks, we got 2,500 gallons. And like I said, I could go on and on and on and on. Very good supply, we've got honest boxes that we, we supply with, that we have stored a lot of stuff in. So like I said, there's the negative parts, but there's some great parts that I think will, there again, carry and slip on those several years. As far as where we go, I believe we're going to be good for quite a long time. And that's great, we save the taxpayers. Certainly allows us to do a better cleaning job of the maintenance. Maintenance guides have been right up straight, I can't say enough of them too. We've got so many projects that are going through the COVID thing with that. One was through Chris, he purchased, I think it was 130 something, 70 inch Mipian TVs, and the guys have installed those. We get the three months of high school done, and then a couple left there, we start at the middle school. Hopefully we'll finish that by mid next week. We'll start on the elementary school, we'll, we'll, uh, primary school. Primary school will start this Sunday, we're going to be starting on, we have a couple coming in, we're going to be replacing 20, 20 carpet rooms with tile walls. That's what's happened also, that we may not have been able to do before. But, and now the children eat in the rooms, so like I can't say enough, it's, it's due process to, to have that done. Also next week, there'll be a 28 or 22 module building installed, and I think it's going to be 30, or now it's a scheduled thing at the elementary school, to allow two new classrooms for, for room to students there. I guess I could go on and on, now I'll stop there and all the things, but I will, I will give a list of that. Also, I will say, to go on to Dan's thing that we install cameras, all, all new camera system at the elementary school, all new camera system at the primary school. There's around 20 something keypad swipe that we're going to be installing on floor of all the schools. Dan gives a list of the doors that you'd like to have, that will be a security upgrade. And so that's getting done through this fall. So like I said, there are some good, good ones. Kind of like I had a very good one, I can't remember what I did. I can say, it was on November 20, that, that, uh, they had a build a bus food drive for the person that was attracted. And I just can't give them that kudos to the people that were involved. Like I can't give you all the names, there was over 100 people that came that day. It was a continuous thing, they came and passed out food, they loaded the bus up, and all that. Jim, Jim certainly helped organize the, the buses, and then Sean, Dean, Zach Keane and J and G students, I couldn't say enough for them, they, they came and they helped all day long with the traffic thing, and then they helped, helped us load it. There's just so many people, and I'm, I ain't gonna drop this off, and you guys can answer, and look. There was, there was a number of students there that, that came and they attended one. And I even put the names on the backs of the wall and looked and see them. Those students were fantastic, they're fabulous. They helped, you know, from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock, and then, then it was from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock before we get the bus unloaded. It just, I thought somebody, I thought they had the back door open and put food in, because it just got, and, and, and. And the people at the St. Rose's Church, at the food bag there, they were fabulous, we just kept loving food in. There was 3,700 pounds of food, $900 cash that they made that day. And I, I sense that I know there's been more cash money donations brought in, and it just, it was a fabulous thing, so. You know, could have gone to there again, these kids were statues. I just can't say enough, and, and the staff that helped, you know, and the wives that do law says, you know, law, we could see the state of the bus all day long, sack of things. Denise who built the bus that day. It was, I hope I, I can't give enough, enough thanks for what we did. So I guess with anything that was where they ended, so very good call.
Any questions or comments for Jim? Patrick?
Dan, I just wanted to say thank you to, to your, your crew. Tuesday, I had to go by the primary school, pick up some schoolware, had to meet with a lot of the teachers, so I got to step in school. And I mean, as soon as I opened that door, I felt like I was fresh, cleaning product. I mean, everybody was everywhere clean. I mean, everything was moved. It looked like it did kind of over the summer time, where things were just moved out of the way and everything was being hand wiped, we were cleaning all the corners, all the horizontal. I was impressed. I was only there for a couple of minutes, but just, you know, just seeing that and it was really good. It was really good to see. Thanks.
Dan, the thing you're going to pass around is to give that to Laura, a lot hurt, if you wouldn't mind, Laura, something I'd like to the board, because there's always a few of us here. That way you guys at home can also see it. Thank you, Dan. Jamie?
Good evening, everybody. Just before the Thanksgiving break, I had an opportunity to do some training with our ed tech. Those that didn't have to take off, you know, to get the day off kind of thing, would have had more of what we had. People out on quarantine, but we did some deep dive into fostering resilient learner strategies for creating a trauma-focused platform for kids that are still. I have made a point to visit each building a couple of times since I last saw you. Trying to put eyes on people, not interrupt if they're obviously teaching, but to just put eyes on people to say, oh, are you really? Because I guess missed over email, phone calls from a distance. Trying to check on our people because they are working incredibly hard and outside the box and covering for things that come up that you can't predict are going to come up. And they're just, I can't point them off as that, which is beyond amazing. I attended a workshop, the Drummer Woodson, as well with Pina, which you already mentioned, which was very entertaining, which is funny to say, with employers and, and employers being entertaining. But if you've ever met Eric Erland, who's the drummer in Woodson, I want to shout out for him. He, I attended a different training last Friday called It's a Twister. But if you know Eric Erland, he didn't say Twister, he said Twistop, because he's got a Swedish accent. And so that was a really amazing full-day workshop around issues around special ed during the pandemic. And so we spent the first couple of hours just answering a dozen or so questions that we had been asked as participants to send in around the pandemic before the workshop. So the first couple of hours were just answering those questions that were pertinent to all of us. And then the rest of the workshop was a variety of informational things, but it was a great workshop. We started, obviously, you know, the remote learning as of Monday. I have to say that our folks right out of the gate were ready to go, put them all on our cart, if not all, were ready and raring to go. So that services were put in place and kids didn't have gaps in the special ed service. I continue to meet weekly with our state special ed director, because all special ed directors have that opportunity, which is pretty amazing. And actually, the last couple of weeks, I've attended an online workshop with one of our attorney generals for the state domain, Sarah Fox, because she's going over the changes that are upcoming on CDC, making sure that we're aware of those and making sure that we're clear on these things. And I'm working to try to put a stop in each building that just helps special ed, because she's such a big need. Trying to take off our building coordinators, um, we have a teacher in each building, actually more than one, some of the buildings that are responsible for being administrator of an IP meeting, because I truly can't be every parent one. And the principals also, which goes in that quite busy. So they serve as an administrative role in IP meeting. As well as look at and give guidance to the people in the building on their written IPs, the completed IPs. So trying to take that off of them, like please don't go into our online platform called the Dory and look at IPs of you proving. And looking to talk about putting in some training out there for some ed tech that might be interested in writing some what's called written notices. Written notices are just like the meeting minute from an IP meeting. So doing sort of, um, it's like a secretarial type thing. So they're not responsible for the written notice, but it's a tape of notes. And then ultimately, the teacher, especially a teacher, will be responsible for it. But just trying to think of creative ways outside the box to help, since everyone is so beyond stretched. I think the last thing I'll leave you with is that we have had 18 referrals since this school year started. I think according to last night, 26, and that 26 included some that we were still working on from last year. But as of this year, we've had 18 so far. That's my report.
Any questions or comments for Taylor? Thank you. Okay, so I, on the December 3rd, I sent out an email with a letter tat on it, and one another one the other day. What happened was is that I talked to the association president, Mr. Nathan, and he gave me some, some good ideas on how could we help as a board the, this teaching staff. So the first thing that I'd like to ask for is permission to send out a parent-student letter. That letter basically is encouraging parents and students to, as Phoebe had talked about earlier, get involved, get the work done, don't slack off. But done in a very nice way. And again, I give all the credit completely for writing these letters to Lynn. Wasn't me, it was Lynn, and she's awesome. We are, we are fortunate to have her to do these kinds of things. So the other permission I'd like is to send out a letter to the educators. One of the things that Nathan was telling me is that some of our teaching staff are concerned that they're not going to complete all of their goals and objectives for the year, for the curriculum, and that they're going to be held accountable for that. Well, we have to make it very clear to them that we understand this is, this is totally different. And, you know, get what you can done and do it the best you can, but it's, the, the board supports them. We're not going to, and I feel we're not going to come down on them for that, but we need to make that clear. And then the, the third thing is I'd like to have permission to address the teachers at their meetings representing the board. And that would be more just in the January, just to talk to the teachers and, and reiterate what we said in that letter, so they can hear it first. Would have been nicer if they had done this in December, but I'm constrained, so. I don't, if anybody would like to make a motion, if they want to do.
Yeah, Bob, I will.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, so I move to authorize Robert Staples as board chair to speak for the board with two letters, one to parents and children of the district, and the other to the staff of the district.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. It's part of the, for the discussion, I, if this does pass, I got thinking about how am I going to get this out to the students the best way? And I did contact Taylor. He's, you know, the old guy here is not great on social media, but I think that if Taylor is willing, and he said he would, to help me figure out the, the social media part, to get it out as much as we possibly can. Obviously, if, if this passes. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Lynn?
You had also talked about sending it out as a robo-call. Are you still considering that?
I'd like to send out as many different ways as we possibly can. I'll talk to Mr. Al, what about that? But he's shaking his head, so I'm assuming that's okay too.
I'll hand it over to Chris.
Robo-Chris. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes. Upstein. Thank you, and I'll try to make the board proud. On to policy. Lynn?
Did that motion include the meeting staff at their staff meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't verbalize it, but if that can get added, that would be awesome.
I think you said it at the very beginning.
I think I might just said letters, you know, I forget what I said. But yeah, let's definitely add the staff meetings.
I saw the state board chair to send out letters to students and parents, as well as educators, meeting with teachers.
And meet with the teachers.
And meet with the teachers, yep. During their staff meeting, yeah, yeah. Good catch, Lynn, thank you.
I entertain a motion to accept the second and final reading of policy JEA compulsory attendance and the second and final reading of policy JFABD, education of homeless students.
So moved?
By Elaine, second.
Second.
Any further discussion on this, errors, omissions, anything? Seeing none, roll call please.
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept the first reading of policy JICAJ, breathalyzer use at school functions. First reading of policy JICA, student dress, and the first reading of policy JIC, student code of conduct.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Joel, I believe. Any questions, comments?
Any questions, comments, concerns with any of these? Phoebe?
Hi, okay, so I was looking through the student code of conduct and just a, just a slight change I'd like to make to it. Under the section E, discrimination and harassment slash sexual harassment, it states as follows, for those of you who don't have a copy of this, students shall not discriminate against other students on the basis of race, color, sex, religion, ancestry, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability, nor shall students harass one another on the basis of race, color, sex, religion, ancestry, or national origin, sexual orientation, or disability. Sexual harassment is also prohibited. Harassment on grounds is disciplinary action up to and including expulsion. That's where it stands right at this moment. Now, the last few years, we haven't really changed as much. It's been pretty much the same. However, it's come to my attention that while the Supreme Court did widen the definition of sex, there's still concerns surrounding any of our trans students or trans and community members as well as our staff. So I would like to add into it just to make sure that we are protecting every single person in our district to add gender identity in there as well. That way, there is no question that they cannot be harassed or discriminated against.
Get the form of the motion on, to add to this?
Just to make sure I understood you, Bob, you want me to put that into a form of a motion?
Bob, if you're talking, we can hear you online. I don't know if anybody's there in the room still.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, a motion, please.
I'd motion to make changes to the student code of conduct in section E to add gender identity to ensure that the students cannot, students and staff cannot be discriminated or harassed under this clause.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Lynn? And discussion?
Where would you put it, Phoebe?
There are two sections in section E. The first line, I put it, I put it right next to sex, actually, since it's just the same thing. Widens it slightly.
Before or after?
Right after sex. On that line as well as the next set where they can't harass, so discriminate or harass, they have, they give both lists and just put it on both, just to keep it uniform.
Phoebe, just because you had mentioned the Supreme Court case, just to give some folks some context, what the Supreme Court case had done was it took the word sex and incorporated gender identity into the word sex. So really, I just wanted to be clear, Phoebe, all we're trying to do with what your request is, it's just a kinetic addition, because from a legal perspective, it is, it is still covered, but you just want that particular verbiage placed in?
Yeah, I'd like the particular verbiage to be put in there because there are still cases that are moving to try to remove that from that definition. So just to ensure that they're covered, blanket it, should that decision ever be overturned by the Supreme Court or anything else, that they know that this is a safe place for all members of our community regardless of anything on this list. Just to make sure that they know that we are a place that welcomes everyone.
And just to make awareness known, we have a number of trans students within our district. This is not something that we're preparing for when it happens. We have a number of trans students in our district, and I think that, that this is a great idea.
Any more comments, questions? Only right now on this amendment to the initial motion. We're just talking about this amendment at this point. Seeing none, so the roll call's on the amendment to add.
Sorry, just give me one second. Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn? Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Now, back to the original motion of accepting the first reading of the three policies. Do we have anything else? Joel?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get to speak before the vote as I was trying to dig it all up, chasing around on my computer here, but especially for those of you on the policy committee, you've, you've heard me mention this before about having lists in multiple policies and other things like that. And Phoebe, I just did want to point out, while this does have that list in it, the, our official policy, A C A A, actually does have the gender identity. I thought, I thought we had it in there, but the official policy on gender identity that covers all harassment and sexual harassment does cover all that.
Phoebe?
I did see that, I just wanted to make sure that this was in here so that it was just uniform, but thank you for clarifying that, Joel.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it speaks, we've run into some scenarios where we have lists in multiple policies and it just becomes a, a complex in order to make sure you keep them all updated to each other. So I think we had that discussion on this one, and yes, that, in the grand scheme of things, you'll call it an admission, but thank you for bringing it up.
Anything else on any of the three policies that we're voting on? If none, roll call, please.
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes. Yes. Now, the old business COVID-19 update.
As you all know, we're full remote, but we hope to go back to hybrid on next, this coming Tuesday. We'll continue to send out COVID updates and whether or not they'll affect us from being remote or hybrid. We had one go out earlier today. Doesn't affect how we're moving forward, but I feel it's important that we share that information because it's very important for us to be transparent in this situation. Many construction projects are getting done at this moment by, for our CRF grants. We finally did receive our September reimbursements for CRF one. We got $75,000 back on that. But remember, we paid out over $700,000 for the month of November for CRF one and CRF two. Because of that, today, we took $500,000 from the trans that you guys have voted on at the last meeting, that tax and revenue anticipation note to help cover warrants in our next payroll. You might have read in the paper, there are other districts that are now doing that as well. We have heard back from the states. The deadline that we had to have everything in by before was December 31st. We still are supposed to have everything done by December 31st, but they've extended the paperwork deadline until the beginning of March. The good part about that is it takes the pressure off and that we can also include our last payroll all the way up to December 31st for, for things like subs and extras for the bus drivers, et cetera. But the downfall of that is I'm really thinking the state needs more time in the reimbursement process, so us getting the trans is even more important because it sounds to me like they are going to be moving slowly and getting some of that money back to us.
Any questions, comments for Scott? Thank you. And I entertain a motion to extend the MOA between RSU 73 Board of Directors and the RSU 73 Education Association and the NEA through January 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
By Phoebe, second by Mike, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Any comments, concerns, questions?
I, I really think it's, it's great that you guys are doing the letters and Bob is going to reach out to the, you know, the staffs. This is more important than any of those things to show our true support of the staff going forward. The reason we're only extending it a month at a time is because there's some things that could be changing coming up, but we want to show them that it is important and we want to keep the MOA going as long as we feel it, it's right for both sides. So that's why we brought it before you to, to vote again to continue on.
Mr. Heinrich, do you have any comments on this for?
I just wanted to make sure that the district now, because we're very fortunate to have a district that supports our staff in this, in our letters that you're going out, this MOA. We are one of the few districts, so maybe only one district in the region, that has an MOA that protects the things that this district has put together, together with the staff. That in itself, the work that was done this summer, including the staff to make the plan, the framework, that guided to the reopening of our school, has been awesome. I mean, I can't say enough, I keep saying to my staff members I talk with, how fortunate we are to have a district that supports our staff, especially in times like this. So I want to thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Joel?
I just want to be sure as a clarification point on this. This is just an extension, there's no changes to it as part of this?
At this point, there are no changes.
No, at this point, there are no changes, Joel. We, we are talking about an MOU to connect with two pieces of this, actually more for definition purposes, but we have to pass the MOA first before we sit down and have that official meeting. But there's a couple of things that I actually, I believe is beneficial for, for both sides. We're looking at limiting that, the three days getting ready if we have to go remote again.
That was my next question.
We hadn't, I mean, we weren't sure when it was going to happen, how long it was going to be. I mean, when we sat down in August and September, we thought it could be happening right away. Now that that's been established, if you guys vote to move this forward, we're looking at allowing one day of being ready if a staff person needs it, not across the board if they don't need it, and we drop to one day instead of the three. Because now that we've experienced it, hopefully, we can go forward and be better and quicker.
Because I, as a continuation on that, because that wasn't my next, I got two more of the things on that, I mean, for anyone following along in the hard copy, it's point 51. My question was, is it every single time, even as a short-term full remote learning, as well as exactly how are those days treated as far as educational days or not, as far as our total count for the year? And then I have one question after that.
The total count for the year, right now, the state does not have a total count for the year for us. They'll be coming out in January, and it could be from a certain date in January forward that they'll tell us how many days we actually have to have from that January date to June. I think so many districts are doing so many different things, and it's such a crazy year that they're not, they're not limiting us to, or I should say, structuring us to have their normal 175 school days.
Okay, and, and my last question is, is this posted anywhere on the website? It's not in the contracts area, and I'm just wondering, is that posted anywhere out there?
We can make sure that it is.
Exactly, I assume it's a public document because we're talking about it here in public session, so I, I think it'd probably be good to have that available out there.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mike, did I see your hand or other one?
Yeah, you did. I, I mean, Nathan kind of nailed it right on the head. I wanted to, to say thank you to the negotiation team and to you, Scott, for being willing to, to sit down and hammer out this MOA and to be, you know, one of the districts leading the charge and, and making sure that their teachers and staff members are safe. So thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call?
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Taylor, though.
Unofficially, yeah.
Taylor?
I don't think I can vote on this one.
Unofficially.
Uh, yes.
Okay, under new business, a review of budget timeline for fiscal year 22.
21, 22. You guys have it all in your packet. We'll see if things go forward, if things aren't quite as crazy as last year. I still believe, unless things change drastically, I don't know if we'll be able to have that district budget meeting, and we'll have to have a district budget hearing again, but a lot can change between now and April 15th and what might happen with the number of people they're allowed to have in one setting. We're starting about a week later, only because a lot of this stuff to go over with you without having the 279s in place, usually we get that about the first week in February. We want to be able to have that information for you. Hopefully, they have it in time this year. Moving forward, we know it's, it's going to be a tough year all across the state. We know this, actually, the biennial budget for the state this year and next could be very difficult. They've talked anywhere from 2% to 10% cut of what the state gives us. Last year, they gave us $9.3 million, so if it is 10%, that could be $930,000 less that we have to deal with. We don't know if it's going to go to that point. We'll know when we get the 279s. So the next two and even, even three years could be difficult because we know things go up no matter what we do. We have five contracts we're negotiating right now. The reality is, things go up. It just becomes more difficult if we don't get what we normally get from the state, so.
Any questions, comments? Okay. And subpage, I thought it was, that was on, that was in an email, right?
Yeah.
So I entertain a motion to accept the subpage changes as designated by the superintendent.
Second.
Moved by Elaine, second by Patrick. Discussion, comments, questions?
Can you explain what we're voting on again? I didn't quite understand what you're saying.
I didn't quite understand what you're saying.
The substitute pay that you got an email on.
Okay. Yep.
Like I said in the email, normally, it's a two- to three-year setup. But with everything that's crazy going on, we just need to establish going at least until June 21st, June of 2021. Some of the changes are based on because the minimum wage goes up starting January 1st. At the moment, I still plan on continuing with the COVID subpay. At least we can do that one month at a time. We don't know if there's going to be another stimulus package coming out going forward. There's a good chance there might be, but we don't know that. But it's very important that we keep the subs coming. We've kept them very busy. Those people who've been the long-term subs have done a fantastic job for us. So that's where we're at with this.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Lena? Yes. Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor? Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joel?
Abstain.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Andrew? Bob?
Yes.
And the next one, I entertain a motion to, I'm going to word this one. Certification of employment of our superintendent. There's a form that we have to do each year to send to the state. So a motion to certify employment of our superintendent.
So moved. Second.
I'm going to go with Mike on the first and Phoebe on the second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none?
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lane? Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. And before we go into executive session, I would like to take a quick five-minute break. That's okay with everyone? What's that? Did I miss something?
Yeah, the bus order, the memorandum.
No, we'll come back and do that too.
I wouldn't get the pass to the addendum because that's the only way this can pass. So I highlighted it in yellow. Sorry.
I mean, no time to go on. All righty. You guys are the third executive session. They're great, they're great. Some reason I don't. Although, although, it ain't, it's, it's. Hopefully, everyone's back at 7:39. And I did miss one thing. The action on the bus and equipment bids. So I entertain a motion to accept the bids. And I think also having money placed in the transportation equipment line should be part of that motion. We have a motion.
So moved.
Move by Elaine, second. Phoebe? Any discussion, questions, comments?
Hey, Bob, is that in the packet? You know, I know we talked about it, I heard it, but was there an addendum that I missed?
I think it was the.
That was, that was an attachment, and you're not the only one that missed it. Someone else did too, so. Which would be me?
Yeah, I don't know what we're, can someone forward me that email or at least let me know before we vote on it?
So basically, what it is, is we have bids here for a 2001 truck cap, 422. A truck bed, 422. A 2007 Freightliner 78 passenger school bus, 2,122. A 2008 Chevy Uplander van, 822. And for a total of $3,788. And that money, Jim would like put in transportation equipment line to be able to buy three camera systems for the vans.
And just a question of how that process works. I know how it works at the town level. I know they all submit bids and it's open by the, in public session. How does it, how does it work here at the RSU?
Jim's right there. Jim?
Yes. We usually put the bids out for a couple of weeks in the newspaper. Give people two weeks to bid on stuff. This time around, we only got one bid. He bid on all of them, and that's why we have what Bob just read off to you, them with the bids that he had on each of the pieces of equipment and bus and the van.
Each of those was custom chrome. Any other questions?
Yes. Oops, hold on, there I am.
Yeah, there you go.
As far as the financial piece of this, there's no, nothing to prevent us from setting this up to direct the funds as requested. I mean, as far as any fiscal controls or anything else like that.
Up to my knowledge, Joel.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not doing something that we're not allowed to do.
Point. Anyone else? If not, roll call.
Can I just make sure I have this right? The motion was made by Elaine and seconded by Phoebe to accept the bus and equipment bid as presented, also to put the bid money into the transportation equipment line to purchase cameras for the bus.
For the ZEAs. For the ZEAs.
Okay. Lena? Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yep.
Taylor?
Taylor?
He's in the middle.
Yes, Taylor.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to enter the executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA 4056D. Move by Patrick, second. Elaine? Roll call.
Yes. Pat?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yes. And we'll be entering the executive session at 7:45.
Thank you.
We're back in session at 7:57. I entertain a motion to accept the managers and directors collective bargaining agreement, bargaining agreement for July 1st, 2021 to June 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Phoebe, second by Doug. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Lena?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I entertain a motion to enter the executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA 4056.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Doug? Roll call.
Lena?
Lena?
Sorry, yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.